Call order, the monthly board meeting. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Keenan makes the motion. So are the seconds. Show of hands in favor. Seven no motion carries. Motion approved minutes from study session, regular session minutes, closed session minutes on 3/25/2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Show of hands in favor. Seven no motion carries. Order recognition, Dr. Henry.
I'm like you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's getting serious. Mary Ann's getting up and getting her camera ready, so everybody be ready to go here. We've got a few folks to recognize, and we're really appreciative of the service this board has given us. The first person that I will recognize, I'll make sure I get my boxes right here. We had two members up this past election, and one of which was reelected, and that is Mr. Charles Quinn. So congratulations to Mr. Quinn. We thank you for your service for the last three years. Looking forward to another great three years with you. And for this one time on camera, I'll say, roll tide. Just go ahead and get your...
(laughing).
All right. Just don't touch one of them. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You have to go who we got there. We've got to vote on it.
Thanks for the voters. Thank you. Roll tide again.
I said one time for the cameras. Now we're going to recognize our officers from this year. We had a great year, outstanding school board, and continue to grow as a district, and that's from the fine governance and leadership that we have from our school board. The first one I'll recognize is President Paul Schultz. Mr. Schultz, in his first term as president over the last year, and we appreciated his leadership. We appreciated his vision for our school district. Mr. Schultz has been instrumental in the implementation of new programs in our district to include swimming, middle school, baseball, and softball, as well as being the leader on the Board of Education with the approval of a $1.25 million DODIA grant to improve STEM education in our district. So we'll recognize Mr. Schultz.
Back in the zoo?
No, I can't do that. I'm sorry.[229.59][229.59](laughing).
Hold on, I gotta get your... Okay. There we go. Yeah.
M-I-Z.
I shouldn't have started with that roll tide, but I felt like I was trying to be nice to...
It's contagious.
So, I tell you. Next, we're going to recognize our Vice President, Dr. Leroy Fulmer. During his long tenure as a board member in our district, Dr. Fulmer has served in numerous capacities, including previously President of the Board. This year, he's been Vice President over this past year, and he is also our Region Eight Chair for the Missouri School Boards Association. So, Dr. Fulmer.
(applause).
Next up, a man that needs no introduction, Mr. Deering. In his first term on the Waynesville School Board, he has already been elected and served as treasurer for the past school year. He is a retired educator and coach from the Waynesville School District, also worked in the juvenile division of Plaski County, and we sure appreciate all of the work that Treasurer Dan Deering has done for us. Thank you. (applause).
Gee, Dan, I see how much you like those certificates.
And the next one, I'm going to have to have come up here and stay for a little bit. So, the last one that we have up tonight is our Secretary Butch O'Reilly. Mr. O'Reilly served as Secretary of the School Board this year. In his terms on our school board, he previously served as president. I'll have him remain up here because we're going to do one more recognition for Mr. O'Reilly when we're done. So, I'll say many more good things about him in just a moment, and I won't say rock chalk, because I know he, of all people, loves that the best. So, hold on here.
Just because my grandson listened to you.
That was a mistake. Well, I know Steve would want me to say, like, "Good evening, Waynesville School Board." But we're very fortunate this evening to recognize Butch O'Reilly. He's been with the Waynesville School District for, can I say decades? And then being polite there?
Just be polite.
Okay. Decades. And has decided to end his tenure as a board member this year. Butch has served as a teacher, coach, administrator, and board member during his time in our district, and has been instrumental in the implementation of numerous programs throughout our district, as well as being heavily involved in this place that we're all sitting right now, the building of this facility. Butch has served on the City Council of Waynesville. He's also been involved in leadership of his church. While we'll miss the wisdom he provides to the Board of Education and the historical knowledge he possesses of our district, we're very happy for him and for Becky, as they'll be able to spend additional time with family, maybe running around watching soccer games and things like that. So, we're going to miss Butch. We appreciate all he did. And the reason why I dropped the State Representative Steve Lynch intro here is because we are going to honor him tonight with a resolution from the Missouri House of Representatives, from Representative Lynch. He was very disappointed that he couldn't be here. He texted me while we're in study session, "There seems to be things going on in Jefferson City right now," or else he would have a rousing speech for you. But I just want to say thank you, and Steve wanted me to extend his heartfelt thank you for all you've done for our community. So, Mr. Butch O'Reilly, Coach O'Reilly, Principal O'Reilly, we're going to miss you. (applause).
And roll tide, right? She had to get it in the end there.
He did.
Now, you're not... Well, I guess I got a little bit longer. I was going to make you run laps. I think that's fitting, and I should be able to do that, other than you had to do it to me quite a bit. All right. We're going to slide into action items. Action item A, Leader in Need, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're bringing you a proposal for the Leader in Me program. And we have talked about this extensively over the past several years in board retreat. We've talked about it in study session. Leader in Me is a program that helps students build those 21st century leadership and life skills. It is a program. Sixth Grade Center actually started this when they opened, and it kind of did a grow-your-own version of it, and they've really worked to build those leadership skills in their students. And this year, Partridge and Sixth Grade Center went through the official training, and we would like to bring that training to the rest of our district. There are two models. One is where Franklin Covey, the company, comes in and does the training. The other is where we get our own folks trained, so we can deliver that support as needed to our buildings on our timeline where it makes the most sense. So, tonight, we are bringing you a proposal to implement Leader in Me, starting with our elementary buildings next year, and then moving into our secondary buildings the following year. So, tonight, motion, administration requests a motion to approve the Leader in Me proposal in Year One District Model Contract as presented.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Carter, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Quinn, second. Show of hands in favor. Seven no motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you.
B, election results, Dr. Henry.
Well, I told Mr. Pondrum this was his last chance. After this, it's going to be official. But he said, "Go ahead and make the recommendation." But we do have our results from our election, and they're there for you to certify this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Deering, second. Show of hands in favor. Seven no motion carries. Congratulations, there. I did want to say before we adjourn here, you'll always be Coach. I've known this guy the majority of my life. Like I said, he's made me run a lot, the hill and everything else. But he's been a principal of mine, but he'll always be Coach of me and several others. So, thanks again, Coach. Miss you. And with that, we'll adjourn.
Can I say something here?
You've got it.
I'd just like to thank the teachers and the administrators in this district and the parents. You know, I used to say I bleed orange and black. Went to high school here, graduated. Thank you, graduate. Came back and taught school here and coached and was an administrator, and this place holds a special place in my heart. So, the board, thank you, board members, central office. We are a class act. I expect you to be that way when I leave. If you're not, I'll come back and haunt you.
Yes, Coach.
Got it.
Okay. With that, and pardon me, my Latin is weak, but we will adjourn, sign I, die. Close enough?
Close enough.
I did...
You're going to adjourn, Cindy. Yes, that's right.
All right.
Mr. O'Reilly, you can hang around for the rest of the meeting if you want to. (laughing).
Can I say something here?
You've got it.
I'd just like to thank the teachers and the administrators in this district and the parents. You know, I used to say I bleed orange and black. Went to high school here, graduated. Thank you, graduated. Came back and taught school here and coached and was an administrator, and this place holds a special place in my heart. So, the board, thank you, board members, central office. We are a class act. I expect you to be that way when I leave. If you're not, I'll come back and haunt you.
Yes, Coach.
Got it.
Okay. With that, and pardon me, my Latin is weak, but we will adjourn, sign I, die. Close enough?
Close enough.
I did...
You're going to adjourn, Cindy. Yes, that's right.
All right.
Mr. O'Reilly, you can hang around for the rest of the meeting if you want to. (laughing). Thank you for your service. We appreciate you. Okay. At this time, it's Megan's most favorite time of the year, where she gets to swear in to, oh, well, a returning board member and a new board member.
Okay. Gentlemen, if you could please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Missouri...
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
...discharge the duties of school board member...
Discharge the duties of school board members.
...in and for...
In and for.
...the Waynesville School District...
Waynesville School District.
...County of Plaski...
County of Plaski.
...State of Missouri...
State of Missouri.
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
...discharge the duties of school board member...
Discharge the duties of school board members.
...in and for...
In and for.
...the Waynesville School District...
Waynesville School District.
...County of Plaski...
County of Plaski.
...State of Missouri...
State of Missouri.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...according to law.
According to law.
Did you get your picture?
Yes.
Yep.
Being in the chair.
Okay. We're going to call the reorganization meeting to order at this time. Just a reminder to board members that I will lead the election of president. Seconds are not required by Roberts Rules for nominations. A member can rise to accept or decline the nomination. After each nomination, I will say the candidate's name and ask if there are any further nominations. Motion is not required to close nominations. We will ask if there are more than one nomination, ask for candidate one. Those in favor, then candidate two. Those in favor, to decide who will be president. So, at this time, I will open the floor to nominations for president.
I nominate Paul Schultz.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing that there are no other nominations, if there are no objections, Mr. Schultz will be elected by acclamation, and he will then take over for the election of our Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. Any objections? All right. President Schultz.
All right. Thank you, everybody, again, for a second time. Maybe I'll do a little better this time. Do I have a nomination for Vice President?
Mr. President, I want to condemn, I mean, I want to nominate Dr. Fulmer for Vice President.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. So, yes, you don't have to vote, right?
No, you can, as long as there's no objection, you can...
All right. As long as there's no objections, Dr. Fulmer will continue as Vice President.
Look, damn.
Do I have a motion for Secretary? Or not a motion?
Make a motion that Dan Deering...
Dan Deering? Any others? Dan, you want to run, or are you good? Okay. Well, congratulations, Dan, Secretary. And now, like Treasurer?
I'll nominate Charles Quinn. Since he's a representative on the National Financial Board, he should be Treasurer.
Is that qualifications enough?
I don't know. It's pretty slim.
Any other nominations? And with that, congratulations, Charles, Treasurer. Also want to welcome Erin. Congratulations on your win. Congratulations, Charles.
Thank you, sir.
Didn't know what we would do without hearing "roll tide" at all meetings in the winter.
It would have been in the air anyway.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes the motion. Mr. Carter, second. Show of hands. Seven no motion carries. Assistant's statements. Dr. Henry.
Mr. President, we had no one request to present to the board this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Written communications?
We did recently, just as of this afternoon, have one written communication from Gail Eady, a very complimentary letter to the board, and be happy to share that. It was addressed to Mr. Schultz, and then it'll be in during our next session here that you can look over the letter. Very nice letter, and thank you to Gail.
Thank you, Miss Eady. I actually had her as a teacher in a college class, and she does very good there. I'm sure she has done exceptional with us. Assistant's update. Military update?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. This coming Thursday is the Fort Leonard Wood Volunteer Appreciation Event at the Persian Community Center at 2:30. I know we have a lot of volunteers in the community. Just want to remind them of that. We have, just want to acknowledge their service to all our programs on the installation. Also, on 26 April, from 9:00 to 2:00, at the Nutterfield House, the installation will be open for a Earth Day event. It's a conglomeration of different displays on Earth Day, conservation, endangered species, and that event is open to the public. And lastly, we're still hiring for summer jobs, USAjobs.gov. We have several openings on the facility for summer positions, everything from golf to our RecPlex summer opening. So, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. District announcements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our resilient sixth grade staff is sitting back there. They went through, all the way through reorganization now. So, we have our sixth grade building with us this evening. Board, can we hear you back there? There we go. Very good. Very good. Well, we appreciate you being here and all you do to help our students transition from elementary to middle, and look forward to recognizing you this evening. First up is Governor Mike Parson and Fort Leonard Woods' commanding general, General Donna Martin, is going to present to our students and students from across 24 school districts in our area during the community salute to service at 6:00 PM May 1 in Waynesville High School Gymnasium. We'll have anyone who is enlisted in the military, who has ROTC selection, academy appointment, National Guard, or Reserve, will be invited. Again, 24 districts across our region will be coming in. Really hope to have everyone come out and support these students. It's going to be a great event. It's going to be quite an honor to have our governor here that evening, as well as our commanding general, and recognize these young people for the sacrifice they'll make for our country. So, we're very, very appreciative of that. I want to thank everyone for making the Special Olympics such a success on April 10 here at Tiger Stadium. This is one of the most rewarding events we have in our school district, and I'd encourage anyone, if you want to smile and really enjoy a day, go out to Special Olympics. It's a fantastic day for our kids, for area athletes, and our staff. The district has multiple upcoming fine arts events, including play, an art show, three choir performances, two band performances. The dates and times are listed on the district's main website. There are a bunch of them coming up in May, so please look on the website and find the date and time for your favorite concert. April is Month of the Military Child, and I've caught some grief over this up front here, because you'll notice the board is wearing purple this evening. Everyone who had purple, I should say. Now, there is a rival of ours that won't be mentioned on tape here, but I will say this, that we do recognize the sacrifices that our children make. You know, we're in a school district, 76% of our kids are military impacted in one way, shape, or form, and we're very appreciative of what they're doing for our country, and it's an honor to serve those kids. So, on April 24, we're having our purple up tonight, but on April 24, we're asking the entire community to join in with us, and we're going to have Purple Up Day in our community, where all kids will wear purple to honor our military students. So, please take part in that. It's going to be a great opportunity. Businesses have purple ribbons on the doors, and we've got a poster contest that has started now. It only took, the first one came in, and Mary Ann already cried. So, it's really a neat, neat activity. So, all right, there'll be no school Friday, April 19, or Monday, April 22. The Waynesville R6 Foundation will host Showcase Waynesville Schools on Thursday, May 2, at Waynesville Career Center. So, you can come out on May 1 to recognize students and come back and recognize our fine arts kids on May 2. It's going to be a great evening. The cost to attend this fundraising event is $65 per person, and the event is currently sold out. To be added to the waiting list, please contact Cindy West at 573-528-0168. Summer school will be held from June 3 to June 28. Middle school students will attend the high school due to anticipated construction at the middle school. Registration information is located on the district's main page under Summer School Information Registration Forms. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education selected a graphic design by Andrew Everling and Jeremy Daniels, two Waynesville Career Center students, and Donna Grove's Graphic Design Corps to represent the state for the White House Easter Egg Roll. So, I'll show this real quick. I got a copy of this. Two of our students were the ones who did this, and this will be Missouri's picture that will be for the White House Easter Egg Roll. So, congratulations, those students. What an honor to be included in that. And then finally, graduation will begin at 7:30 PM Friday, May 17. Unfortunately, underclassmen, the last day of school for students grades K through 11 will be Wednesday, May 29. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Yeah, I had to really dig deep.
I know.
I have a third closet to find this.
I know. I know. But it's for a great cause.
It is that.
Purple, and just to let everyone know, purple is the color of the military child, because when you combine the colors of all the branches, creates purple. So, that's the color of the military child. So, we're supporting purple anyway.
Thank you. Consent agenda items. Big recommendations, Dr. Berger?
Yeah, fairly routine items. Did, was brought to my attention, a typo on the custodial supplies. So, that four, which is the same key on the keyboard, has the dollar sign. So, I assure you, that is not $4 million. That is dollar sign $163,000. So, apologize for the typo.
Financials?
Financials, for April 10, in the MOSIP account, $46,457,105.62, $10.5 million in CDs with the Bank of Crocker. General account, $2233,997.75. Payroll account, $96,573.94. Total funds for April 10, $59,287,677.31.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keenan makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Carter, seconds. Show of hands in favor. Seven no motion carries. CTA Spotlight on Education, Mr. Preston.
Mr. Preston, you've got it.
Careful.
I even saw him, I thought.
Yeah.
I would like to thank the board, first and foremost, for having us here to be able to recognize some of our wonderful staff members. Our first staff member I want to recognize is Darlene Starner. Darlene is our certified staff member. She has been in education for 16 years. She has been married for 32 years and has three wonderful girls. In her spare time, when she's not working on things for her classroom, she does enjoy some wonderful lifting. This lady is truly amazing. The things her colleagues had to say about her. Darlene is the perfect teammate. She helps teachers in her content area and around the building. She is always prepared, focused, and kind to everyone around her. She is honest, helpful, and someone that staff members can look up to. She has faithfully worked as a teacher, mentor, team leader, and aspiring administrator. She has met all of her responsibilities with grace, dedication, and poise. Her hard work is worthy of this recognition. (applause). Roxanne has a bachelor's degree in special education and has just completed her ABCTE for elementary education. She has three children and enjoys art, as well as participating in roller derby. Mrs. Hannah's colleagues had these things to say about her. Ms. Hannah is a fantastic paraprofessional. She has a great attitude and is an amazing teammate. She is creative and able to engage students and get them excited about their learning. Ms. Hannah is always ready to jump into action to help out in the building wherever needed and does so with a smile on her face. She is an asset to the classroom, to our building, and our district. (applause).
And Starner, I don't know if this counts or not, another feather in your cap, because Colton said the other day, "Sorry, Melissa," but you are still his favorite teacher and probably will be through college, so...
Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is our honor to recognize Laura Jones as this month's Transportation Employee of the Month. Unfortunately, Laura is not able to be here tonight because she's homesick with a fever, but we're going to talk about her tonight anyway. Laura has worked for our district for 27 years. She has been a bus driver and works with our early childhood students. She is dependable and kind, and she goes above and beyond and helps wherever is needed. Laura plans on retiring at the end of this school year, and so we wanted to take a time tonight to honor her service to our district and recognize her as this month's Employee of the Month. And so, Mr. Wilking will accept this on her behalf.
(applause).
Moving to discussion items. Impact Aid update, Dr. Henry, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, uh, as we all know, Impact Aid is a very important, uh, program for our school district with approximately, this changes, uh, given the year, 40% of our revenues coming in through federal, uh, funding streams and this certainly being the, the largest of our federal funding streams. So, uh, the first couple of slides, we're gonna talk, uh, a little bit about what we took in the previous fiscal year and where we're at during this fiscal year. Uh, let Dr. Berger, uh, talk about those revenues we've had coming in, and then, uh, I'll talk to you a little bit about what we've learned in our last trip to DC and things we need to be looking, uh, for in the future here when it comes to Impact Aid. So, there we go. Dr. Berger?
Yeah, just historically, and I'll, I'll detail this out in an upcoming slide in just a moment on what we've got, uh, what we're looking at for FY '20, but between our basic support, our heavily impacted and DOD Impact Aid, all coded 5411, but historically, we're gonna revenue about $20 million. Uh, can be a little less than that, can be a little more, but that's, that's a good average. And like I said, we'll, uh, detail that on an upcoming slide. Uh, what I want to point out on this slide, the budget, uh, we, we say this every year, we are very, very conservative when we budget Impact Aid. I'm gonna work from the bottom there, that Impact Aid, DOD, uh, so again, still Impact Aid becomes from the Department of Defense as opposed to the, uh, Department of Education. That's a revenue we usually get in July, and, uh, so that's a, that's a hard number. That's already been, uh, went through January revision. And then, the reason why in budget, 10 and 5, uh, 10 million and 5 million for Impact Aid, BSP or Basic Support, Impact Aid Heavily Impacted, the Department of Ed doesn't see any difference in that revenue. So, if, uh, we were not a, uh, a B2 school, a heavily impacted school, that, uh, we wouldn't have a, have Impact Aid heavily impacted line for $5 million, and I'd be able to, uh, tick the Impact Aid BSP up to about 10, too. But whenever it comes in, in the fall, you typically, I'm gonna get a first payment. Every school in the nation is a BSP school. It's because they haven't determined eligibility. And so, uh, we put that in, really it doesn't matter what line we put it in. We're gonna balance that in the end of, of the fiscal year, the state's fiscal year in June and separate that out closer to the 10 million in, in BSP and around 5 million in, in B2. Sometime, this is the, the piece that I wanna, uh, try to make clear, sometime in the spring, they're gonna determine B2 schools, and we may even get another, uh, BSP payment prior to that. But this year was exceptionally good. We got appropriations for Department of Ed, uh, were done in October. Even through the partial shutdown, Department of Ed was up and rolling, and there was never any word about us being, uh, uh, anything stalling in terms of revenues coming in. So, if you look there, we've already got our $17 million. Now, that's what I expect to, we may get a little bit more in, but that's what I'll expect to close out FY '19 with. And then in the June revision, I'll put a $10 million or a little over that, and I'll, I'll, uh, put the remaining in the, in the heavily impacted. But if the board remembers for the previous two years, previous to FY '19, I've written out a board memo because I did not know if those dollars were gonna come in. And that last payment will typically be anywhere from 3 to $7 million. And I tell you that because the feds run off of a different fiscal year and they don't care that our fiscal year closes in June. So, I'm typically writing out, uh, a board memo that says, "I'm not sure this is gonna come in." If it doesn't come in, we're not making $15 million on it, on that fiscal year. If it does come in, we're gonna jump up over, well over that. So, it's, uh, the, the confusion of, or the, the fact, the simple fact that Missouri runs off a July-June fiscal year and the feds run off October and September, can make the budget off a couple million dollars under and a couple million dollars over. Typically over because we're gonna, we're gonna call for that money, but that's, that's, uh, efforts we make. But, uh, I detail that out in memos. We talk about it typically during the budget, uh, you know, when we approve or January revision, but, uh, those are kinda some intricacies within 5411 within Impact Aid.
Okay, so, uh, you know, yet, yet again, another great rationale for strong reserves, conservative budgeting. You know, uh, that, that's, uh, two big messages to pull out of that. Uh, we need to continue that and, and it protects our district. Uh, Dr. Berger gets to deal with his good friends, the numbers, quite a bit. I get to deal with the politicians quite a bit. So, I'm gonna go through a few things that we're working on, uh, right now. Uh, you'll notice the first thing there, that, that kinda dirty old word, sequestration, uh, pops back up. Just, just remember, there's a threat of a return to sequestration that will be coming around, uh, towards the end of this session. If that would happen, it would be a 9% decrease in non-defense discretionary funding, which will have a devastating impact on, on Impact Aid and the money that we get immediately. Uh, so, you know, when you hear the talk of raising the funding caps, that's a very important thing for us at the federal level, to be able to preserve that non-defense discretionary funding. When you hear that NDD and all that kinda stuff like that out there in DC, we wanna see those caps raised because that's gonna be what helps us. Then you look at the president's budget, level funding, uh, was proposed in the president's budget. That's gonna be about $1.4 billion this year federally. That's gonna, it was gonna need an additional $50 million just to bring us to the FY '18 levels that we have. So, uh, not only are we gonna need that level funding, we're gonna need a little bit more. And we talked about that. To get us to the level that would be more optimal, be closer to $100 million. So, uh, there's still extra costs. Each year, things get more expensive. We really need the additional funding coming in. Uh, infrastructure needs are huge right now. As we know, uh, across the nation, there's an issue with being able to pass bonds on the installations, uh, through the community to pay for those things. So, uh, we really feel like it's a, a very logical argument, uh, to the federal government to pay for infrastructure needs, uh, on installations. And there's just not a ton of money or enough money going into that to make sure we address all of the infr- infrastructure needs. And finally, this is a, a issue both at the federal and state level that I continue to encourage public education advocates to track very closely. Uh, there's legislation that could potentially come through during this, this particular session, uh, that would be in educational savings accounts for military children. Uh, what they would tell you is last year, they directly used Impact Aid as the pay for in that. And there was a, a great deal of pushback, uh, from Impact Aid community, uh, bipartisan, uh, at, at the federal level to not use Impact Aid, uh, for vouchers because it is, it is money we receive in lieu of taxation. We can't tax anything on Fort Leonard Wood. So, with this, what they've done this year is they've not put a pay for to it. They wrote it into Title VII, which is Impact Aid, but they didn't put a pay for on there. Uh, so they didn't specifically say Impact Aid would pay for it. And that's really scary because at the end of the day, if it passed, it's got a, it's got a price tag of about $1.2 billion. And I just mentioned, the overall Impact Aid allocation for this year would be $1.4 billion. So, we're a little worried about where the money's gonna come from if a voucher program comes across. I would encourage you, uh, to please stay on top of that issue, uh, both at the, at the federal and state levels. Uh, it, it's a serious funding issue for us in our, our district. The next thing we're gonna go into is just, uh, to, to wrap this presentation up, uh, Impact Aid in, in Missouri. As the board, uh, may have remembered, we talked about this last year, uh, the, the Impact Aid folks at the Department of Education made the decision that Proposition C would no longer count as local effort, uh, for Missouri schools. Uh, we contested that, uh, argued that, uh, long and hard out in, in DC, and unfortunately, uh, though this has been the standard for 20 years in the state of Missouri, uh, the decision was made at IA that we could no longer use Proposition C. So, that had a detrimental impact in our local effort. Alright, so, I wanna go to Proposition 1 again because, uh, that was a huge campaign for us on so many levels. And, and one thing to remember here is if we had not passed Proposition 1 in the community, we would've been falling out of Impact Aid much sooner than what, uh, than what we potentially could in the future. Alright, so, that's an important point just to carry out to our community that that additional levy is helping us tremendously. And we need to think about the future here because as we talked about, even during the Proposition 1 campaign, there will be a point in the future where we're gonna have to come back and look at this. Timelines really haven't changed, but certainly losing Proposition C was a big deal for the state of Missouri, for us and for Nob Nostr. Okay, so, we still feel very confident that things are moving along at the pace that we predicted, uh, but certainly, uh, Prop 1 and those additional local effort funds are, are, are key for us right now. So, just wanted to bring that back up and, and let you know how the future is going with Impact Aid. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Henry, Dr. Berger. MSBA policy update, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, um, you have policy IKE, Promotion Acceleration and Retention of Students. It is attached for board's review and consideration. There was a change in state statute last year that required adding, um, policy language around acceleration, and this policy does that. Um, so, this is for your review. Any comments or suggestions will be accepted between now and the May meeting when it will be resubmitted for action and adoption.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Salary presentation, Dr. Henry?
Got my cardio in for the day there. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, salary update, we've been briefing the board all along. Uh, we, we did get the survey results back from our certified faculty, uh, and, and just to let you know, with the multipliers we've been proposing, there was an 80%, 81% of our faculty preferred, uh, to have an increased multiplier versus the increased base salary. That was about 19%. So, as you can see here, the proposal would, would be a, uh, no additional weights in, in column 1. Uh, column 2 would be a quarter of a percent onto that multiplier, uh, half a percent on columns 3, 4, and 5, uh, percent on 6, 7, and 8, and then a quarter percent on 9 and 10. Uh, again, this is to address, just as a reminder, we're about $2,600 higher than our competitive districts, uh, in the base salary figure. So, we have a pretty good cushion there, but we do have some issues when you get to the middle and, and kind of lower parts of our, our middle columns, meaning that's your, your more veteran teachers. It's also where over 260 of our people are at, uh, in the salary schedule. So, uh, this helps continue to address that, that issue in our schedule. Uh, and in a year where, um, we could say, uh, that, that revenues might not be what was promised initially, uh, this gives us an opportunity to put our money, uh, to, to get the greatest effect. Again, here was the, uh, the survey results when we asked about increased multiplier. In addition, uh, SOS proposal. Eligibility for SOS would be open to all teachers, uh, in this, this proposal to the board. Would increase pay from $30 to $35 an hour. Uh, after 20 hours, teachers would be paid by hours worked, which is different than what we have. Uh, we allow payment to be received in December and June. Kind of some interesting findings in our, our survey from that area. Uh, total cost of that would be about $124,000. Uh, so, this gives an opportunity then for that new teacher coming in, even though, again, we're, we're about $2,600 ahead in base salary, they still could work going to, to their second year. If they stayed in that first column, they could do SOS and still, uh, be able to bring in additional, uh, income for themselves. And, uh, this was interesting. Uh, June only, to the left, was when folks preferred to be paid. Uh, December and June, uh, to the right there. Uh, basically, we have, we have interpreted this in our office to mean that, give folks a choice. Uh, and what would happen is in, in January, if you wanted to be paid in January, uh, you have to get to your 20 hours first. And then, if you get to your 20 hours, you could be paid out in January and then the remainder, uh, could come to you in, in June. So, uh, that, that would be, or, excuse me, December and June. Uh, classified draft proposal, we're very pleased to say in our classified salary areas, we're number one, uh, across the board. Uh, there's one area, uh, that we are looking at, uh, more of, uh, you know, to, to do a little bit of an increase on, but really, when you look at all of our positions across the district, uh, we're at the top, but we wanna see them continue to move. We wanna keep those folks, uh, going the right direction. So, a half percent of the base pay, that half percent would, it would increase, uh, our, uh, our payment there by $54,000. Movement would be about $180,000 for our, our classified folks. So, when you look at it all, uh, you know, put together there, certified increase, about $520,000, uh, to increase, enrich the salary schedule. Classified increase, $54,000. If you count that movement for both classified and certified, you're looking at about $650,000. SOS at about $124,000. Our benefits increase, about $250,000. So, you're looking in the range 1.6 million, uh, that will go into salaries this year. So, having said that, this is, uh, just a first read, uh, on, uh, on this, this recommendation this month. We'll come back in May, uh, and ask the board for approval at that time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments? Thank Dr. Henry. Uh, FY '19 staffing plan, first reading, Ms. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The FY '19 staffing plan is presented as a first reading at this time.
Comments or questions? Uh, food service program evaluation, Dr. Berger and Ryan Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna ask Ryan Murphy from OPA to step to the podium. He'll have a brief presentation. The program eval is an artifact in board docs.
Alright, first of all, I just wanna say thank you for giving me the time and opportunity to speak. I'm just gonna keep this brief and go over a couple of our key goals and kinda what we're doing in the food service program. Alright. So, our biggest thing, of course, is participation. We wanna make sure all the kids are eating and, uh, getting the opportunity, uh, to get the lunch provided to them. So, that blue line right there is gonna be our goal, and then that yellow line is actual from, and these, uh, let me remind you that these numbers are from August to about the end of February. So, that yellow line is where we're at. We're well above our goal, so that's fantastic news for us. And then, uh, I'm just gonna kinda break this down a little bit more for you. So, our lunch participation, this is lunch only across the board, across the district. And once again, we're pretty, pretty above our goal in most areas. And then, for breakfast, we're really above our goal. The, the breakfast in the classrooms in the elementary schools has been a huge hit, a huge success for us. And then, um, everywhere else as well. So, uh, breakfast has been a huge hit. Our all la carte's suffering a little bit. We only do all, we only offer all la carte in our high schools, so that's really the only opportunity we have that right now. We're looking to ex, do some things to kinda expand that for us. And then, this is our average daily participation versus our enrollment. So, you can see for 2018, 2019, enrollment was down a little bit, but our, uh, average daily participation was still up. So, that's great news. And then, this just kinda breaks it down by building. So, you can see that every, every single school in our district is meeting our goal except for high school and Freedom, and they are just barely missing that. So, we are working on ways to do that. A couple of things, um, at the high school that we're doing, we're increasing their options. So, by increasing their options, we're trying to build that participation. So, uh, on a given day at the high school, they are now up to eight choices per day as to where they were, uh, originally just at 4. So, a couple of things that we have done, we've made a, uh, permanent sub bar, create your own sub bar. It's kinda like Subway. They walk up, our wonderful ladies will walk them through it and put everything, any kinda, uh, fresh toppings, fresh baked bread that they get to choose from, multiple choices. We have a brand new grab and go station that offers up to four, four items to kinda move the, move the lines, get them out a little bit more quickly and give them more choices as well. And then, of course, we still offer our wonderful fruits and vegetables and, uh, OPA-to-go salads, which we're really fond of. So, breakfast, you can see every single school is hitting their goal, well above their goal, which is fantastic news. And then, this is just our meals per labor hour with our ladies right now. Our goal's about 20, so we're a little bit low, but we're, uh, looking for ways to improve that goal. This is district profit and loss is our estimates. You can see from 2018 to 2019, we're making pretty big strides and looking at just a $19,000 deficit. Looking forward, this is just a couple of things we're looking at. Improving in the kitchens, uh, being new in my role, I, I really wanna, I'm trying to spend a lot more time in the kitchens, especially with the kitchen managers, get to build relationships and, and, uh, kinda see what they're doing and what we can improve as a group. And then, these, uh, just a couple pictures of what we're doing. You can see the bottom middle picture, that was Dr. Sustay. This was at Freedom Elementary. They had a blast. It was really fun to watch and, uh, fun to get to observe. They, every single kitchen, uh, staff member dressed up. They had cat in the hat. They were going in the cafeteria. It was really, it was really a fun day. And then, you can see next to that's our fresh baked bread at the high school. Uh, we bake it every single day. They have three options. Above that is gonna be the grab and go station. You can see that there's pizza, I think hamburgers and grilled cheeses there. Next to that is our, uh, new sub bar, the fresh veggies that we cut every single day. And then, we have a fruit, and then, we also implemented a brand new hot veggie station. That's been a pretty big, uh, kick. Just another way, uh, to introduce veggies to our schools. So, um, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to action items here. Action item A, proposed job description, second reading, Ms. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job descriptions are presented for a second reading. The following attached job descriptions are presented for a second reading. Administration is requesting approval of 3.1.3 Athletic Trainer/Teacher, 4.8.9 Admin Secretary/Operational/Personnel Services.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Kreiter makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Keenan seconds. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. B, 2019-2020 Professional Development Handbook, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2019-2020 Professional Development Handbook is presented for a second reading. The handbook was presented at the regular March meeting, and no comments or questions were received. Administration requests a motion to approve the Professional Development Handbook as presented.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Dr. Fulmer makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dearing, next, a second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Proposed 2019-20 reboundry of Thayer Wood Elementary, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. We presented the reboundry proposal to the Board of Education at the last meeting during study session. Administration has not received any questions or comments regarding moving Montrose Street back to Wood for the beginning of next school year. Those already in attendance at Thayer will have the opportunity to be grandfathered in and stay at Thayer, and we are recommending this reboundry at this time, please.
Comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Ms. Keenan, next, a motion. Ms. Ponder, a second. All in favor, show of hands. Motion carries, seven oh. District Assessment Plan, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The District Assessment Plan is reviewed, updated, and presented for approval annually. The Assessment Plan outlines the assessments that will be utilized by the district, use and dissemination of results, as well as test security procedures. The updates this year were to revise the language for English language learners to English learners as per the Every Student Succeeds Act. They made that change in language. And then additionally, the updated assessment policy that was approved in March 2019 was added, and the previous policy was removed. Administration requests a motion to approve the District Assessment Plan as presented.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Ms. Dearing, next, a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Kreiter, a second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Student Handbooks, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Mr. President. The student handbooks for the Waynesville Career Center Adult Handbook and the Waynesville Sixth Grade Center Student Handbooks are presented for a second reading. They were presented at the regular March meeting, and no comments or questions were received. Administration requests a motion to approve the student, the handbooks as presented.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion? So moved. Dr. Fulmer makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Quinn, a second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Proposed 2019, or 2019-2020 Transportation Handbook, second reading, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed 1920 Transportation Handbook was presented to the board last month as a first reading. We are requesting approval at this time, please.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Keenan, next, a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Dearing, a second. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Excited about this one, After-School Feeding Program, Dr. Berger.
We, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we are excited about this, and I know we've updated the board on this. Been kind of a year-long planning for this, but we wanted to get it out to our community, and as we believe we have everything lined up to, to submit the application. So we're talking about the Waynesville R6 School District After-School Feeding Program. And this would present an opportunity for our students, really any student that attends any after-school programming for us, would have an opportunity to get a five-component meal. It'd be a partnership with No Kid Hungry organization and Waynesville R6 Schools. And some of the stats that resonate from No Kid Hungry, No Kids Hungry from Missouri, as they surveyed, surveyed out to Missouri families, they found that 92% of kids eat during the afternoon. So that's 92% of kids, when they leave school and have that after-school program, that 92% of them seek to eat that afternoon. That makes sense, and I think that perfectly would line up with anything that we looked at here locally. Of course, with that, 87% of those families have to buy food for that afternoon event. And of course, 59% say it's hard to provide. The 740 dollars over there in the corner, that represents the amount that parents said that they had to commit to each child in feeding that child for, to prepare them for those after-school events that were going on, whether it be band, athletics, clubs, anything. And so as we started pursuing this, we needed to meet three criteria. The first one to meet the applicable licensing was an easy one. It's weighed for schools because of our National Lunch Program requires those same licensing items. But one thing that was a little bit of a challenge for us was, we needed to get greater than 50% for free and reduced lunch. Typically, as a district, we fall lower than that. But if we could get a school district in, that would make us eligible, because that's in the attendance boundary of the entire district. And so we did a late push on this, and Freedom Elementary was able to get 50%. I think we're going to get other schools to exceed that mark in the future, but Freedom was the, the one that got us there this year, and that made our other schools at, any student that would go from Freedom to the Sixth Grade Center, then the Waynesville Middle School and the High School, made those schools also eligible. And then, of course, this last one, we have a few logistics to sort before we do this next fall. But provide regularly scheduled educational or enrichment activities in a supervised setting. Most of that's put in place, but again, we have a little bit of logistical issues to accomplish. This will provide, again, that, that five-component snack, five-component snack that I mentioned earlier, that will include fruits, grains, vegetables, protein, and a dairy. What groups can participate? All of them. I mean, we've got, they'll have the opportunity. We've got some criteria to meet, but that will include clubs, sports, band, tutoring. If the, if your child's after, hanging around after school, we're going to get them fed. Key takeaways from the presentation, as we enter this, the application process for next fall is, any student attending after-school clubs, band, tutoring, sports, may participate, and there will be no charge for any of those students. No sliding scale, nothing. There will be no charge for any of them. Ms. Long has graciously offered up that she's going to reserve some APEN funding to kind of serve as a safety net. We believe this program is going to pay for itself, but in the event that it does fall, that we expenditures rise over revenues for fiscal year 20, we're going to look at Ms. Long to capture some of that. She's eligible to pay for some of that from sixth, sixth grade to 12th grade. And moving forward, it'd be important that we get as many schools to reach the 50% free and reduced lunch threshold to maintain eligibility and support for the program. Super excited about this opportunity. This stems from a discussion that Mr. Dearing and I had, went to board retreat, we started digging in, and think we're going to be able to bring a program that's going to feed every child after school, and really, I'm optimistic, we're going to do it at no cost. And I think it's going to be a long-term program for us. We're really excited about it.
Good deal. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dearing, seconds. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries. Waynesville Middle School Bid Approval, Dr. Berger.
And just more excitement, Mr. President. I'm going to have Don Husband come up, and we are all excited about the next phase in our, upgrading our district facilities. And Mr. Husband will detail out Phase 2.
Thank you. As we discussed in the study session, almost two weeks ago, on April the 2nd, the, the district received bid proposals from three general contractors for Phase 2 construction. The general contractors were Bales Construction Company, Curtis Manisch Schulte, and DeWitt and Associates. Those bid proposals ranged in value from 19, I'm, I'm going from low value of 19,108,000 dollars to the mid-value submitted by Curtis Manisch Schulte at 19,285,400, 285,400. And the third and highest was from DeWitt and Associates at 19,600,000 dollars. Our office had reviewed the, the bid proposals. We found them all in order, and we are recommending that the board accept the low-bid proposal at 19,108,000 from Bales Construction Company.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Ms. Ponder makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Keenan, seconds. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Go to work. Busy, busy time, about to get busy.
Next week, you're thinking, Don, we'll be done. Final walkthrough on that. District surplus, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. President. My last item is district surplus, just our spring cleaning, so to speak, so all the, all the schools turn in our surplus items. Those are offered up there for approval for the board to get rid of.
Nice way to put it. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Fulmer makes a motion, and Ms. Dearing, seconds. All in favor, show of hands. Seven oh, motion carries.
Just a quick, quick comment. I appreciate all the work the maintenance department did, Mr. Pritchard, in regard to the, the lockers being made available to the patrons of the district. And I, I hope you have as much success with the tons of bricks that have probably been requested as we move forward in the, in the high, in the old high school proposal. But that's, that was a great job by your department, and I, there's a lot of people in the community that probably are, were pretty happy about getting a locker.
Yep. Dr. Fulmer, it was really easy. No problem at all.
Good, good. I'll remind you of that on the bricks.
It was easy for me.
I even asked for my old high school locker. I mean, Kevin brought it right out, guaranteed. I couldn't remember the number, so I was pretty sure it was it. Close session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO 610021. Section 3 Hiring, Firing, and Disciplining or Promotion of Employees. And Section 13 Individual Personal Records, Performance Ratings, I have motion to end the closed session.
Make that motion.
Ms. Keenan makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Fulmer, a second. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.